I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, February 1st, 2018. Just a reminder, please silence your phones and any electronic devices you may have. And if you have any blue slips filled out with the item number that you wish to speak on, bring those to Ms. Jessica at the front. Have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Guidry.
Heavenly Father, we come this evening in the most humble and gracious way we know how, giving thanks for all the many blessings you restored upon us as your Christian people. We ask a special blessing upon Ms. Trimmer tonight. We ask that she recover and come back to us brand-new because she's one that's going to be missed here with us, but we just want her to know that we love her and we uplift her tonight in your Son named Jesus. Heavenly Father, we ask for a special blessing upon this jury. We're leaving out of the first month of a new year, Heavenly Father. We just want to be the type of government that's going to be here for the people and do up the people. And we just ask that you would just continue to instill in us the wisdom, the honesty, and the understanding that we need as a governing body to make sure that Calquashew Parish is the best parish in all of Louisiana. Father, we thank you and we uplift you in your Son named Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call, please. Here. 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 Thank you. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Point of personal privilege. Thank you, Mr. President. Just an update on Sandy. She called last night and everything is good. Thought I'd pass that on to you. Consult. A lot of you have asked me this afternoon what the situation is. God was with her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Item number four, presentation of a retirement certificate to Ms. Helen J. LaDay for over thirty-six years of dedicated service to the citizens of Calquashew Parish. Mr. Dean Kelly?
Dean Kelly, Director of Facilities. Start off by reading the flag and ask Ms. Helen to come up and join me, please. So, certificate of appreciation presented by the Calquashew Parish Police Jury on this the first day of February 2018 to Ms. Helen J. LaDay of Facility Management in recognition and appreciation of thirty-six-plus years of service to the citizens of Calquashew Parish. Ms. Helen's one of those ladies that, well, she's touched everybody. She started here in August of 1981, and she has literally worked in every one of our buildings downtown here. And yesterday, we had a going-away party and a lot of folks came up. I was really amazed how many people came. I was attesting to how many lives this lady has touched. So, I'm just going to share a couple of brief stories for myself. As I worked my way through my time here at the jury, when I became a supervisor and, you know, was trying to get used to new things, and there was, I was getting pulled in different directions, Ms. Helen came to my door one day and she said, "Hey, babe." She was holding a coffee. She said, "It's going to be all right. Calm down." Then she gave me that look. She said, "Don't you ever forget where you came from." And I haven't. And I can tell you, that day, Ms. Helen became one of those ladies that kept me grounded and continues that way today. And then I went through another difficult event in life, and she happened to go by one day. I am working. I'm trying to bury myself in work because I had to weight the world on my shoulders. And she says, "Hey, babe, it'll be all right. It'll be all right." And she took a few minutes, she sat down, and we talked. And it helped. And, you know, a lot of times, I hear stories here, and we talk about those folks that become family. And over thirty-six years, Ms. Helen has become family to an awful lot of folks. I hope that I can make it as long as she did, working here. But when we say the police jury is family, Ms. Helen is the embodiment of that. She absolutely has become family with all the people that she's worked with and helped to serve in this parish over the years. So, Ms. Helen, I can tell you, it has been an absolute honor to work with you, and you serve as a guide for a lot of us. So, it's my honor to present this to you tonight.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. President.
Brian, real quick, let's give...
Ms. Helen, a few jurors would like to say a few things. Miss, oh.
Let us from...
I just want to thank each and every one of you, and I've enjoyed working with all of you. Chris, thank you for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And it's been awesome working for the police jury. That's it. I'm not going to say anymore.
Well, we have a few folks that would like to speak.
If these walls could talk.
Ms. Helen, we go way back. You practically raised me as a young man, and I thank you for all the wisdom that you've instilled in me as a young man to become who I am today. But the one thing that Dean mentioned, it was on point. I can remember when I came through those doors and I was actually going through a change of, because of where I worked at and when I had gotten elected, that I was going to have to make a choice. And you saw me in those hallways, and you looked at me, and you told me exactly what you told Dean. Baby, it's going to be all right. And guess what, Ms. Helen? It's all right.
It's been all right, huh?
And I love you for that, and I'll always, always be here if you ever need me for anything. Thank you, Ms. Helen.
You're welcome. Kathy?
Mr. McMillan? You should have been at the retirement party yesterday. It was more of a roast. We're on Seagull here because we can't say what we said yesterday.
No, we can't.
We can't talk like, we were very open yesterday, but the one major thing about Ms. Helen that stands out beyond any is she always made you laugh. She always lifted your spirits. She was a kindred spirit to make you happy. And that's what I kind of just want to reiterate here today. Thank you for always being there, always smiling. I'm not sure why you called Chris out and not me.
Oh, I'm not.
I want maybe to hear the explanation for that, but not on camera.
Because I didn't see him yesterday.
Okay. Yeah, she... I was wondering. But anyhow, we love you, and I know you're going to enjoy retirement.
Yes, I am.
And you're a very tough lady to go through what you've been through, and I'm glad you beat it, and we're always going to be here, and please come and visit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you.
Mr. Landry?
If I may, Mr. President, I'm going to go down there with Ms. Helen. Certainly. And tell her goodbye for now.
Dean's had it all, really, but we all going to miss you. And you did a great job, but the most important thing is you would lift people's spirits every day, whoever you come into contact with. And I think it's safe, I'm going to tell her my secret because it's time. They can't fire you. You already retired.
You can tell her, huh?
I can tell her, and that'll be all right. So now you're going to know why she made sure to call me out. One day, it's been, what, it's been about three or four, maybe five years ago?
About four years.
I'd come down here for something in the middle of the day, and it was in the summertime, and I'd parked across the street. So I started walking that way, and there's Ms. Helen. She had her cart and all. She was on the sidewalk, and I was kind of thinking, well, I'm going to go talk to Ms. Helen on the way in the building. And I wondered, I said, of course, she goes between buildings. So I said, I guess she's on her way, or she's on the way back from one of the other buildings. And so as I got a little closer, she had that cart. She had looked this way, and she looked that way, and I was kind of coming at an angle so she didn't see me. And I kind of wondered, well, what's she looking around for? And then before I got up there, she reached down that flower bed and she was picking the flowers. And she had her little vase on her cart. Picking them flowers and putting in her vase, and what's she looking? Thinking, oh, yeah, nobody saw me. So then I said, oh, I shouldn't do this, but I can't help. So then as I got closer, hey, Ms. Helen, how you doing today? She jumped about that height, and then she saw it was me and said, oh, my God. She said, don't, I said, don't worry, I'll never say a word. I said, it's fine. She thought I snuck in.
I looked all over to make sure I did not see a police jury. Where he came from, I don't know.
So this afternoon, I called down here and I said, are there any flowers growing? Because I was going to do it the right way. I was going to go out there and pick some out of the flower garden. And it's all dead. So, you know, I got you something.
Oh.
Every time I see those flowers out there, I always think of you. I love you.
Thank you. I love you.
There you go. Now you know why I know.
Oh, boy, who is it? That rose.
Thank you. Ms. Helen, I just want to say your lovely, Ms. Helen. I just want to say your lovely, beautiful smile and everything. All your words is going to be missed. Thank you, Ms. Helen, for everything. You are the best.
Thank you, Tony.
You are the best.
President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Thank you, Ms. Helen, and enjoy your retirement.
I will.
I'm sure it's well-deserved. I know it is, but you will be missed, and you can still come back by.
I will.
Absolutely.
Come pick my flowers.
We won't say nothing, I promise you, Ms. Helen. We won't say a word.
That's called one more time.
Item number five, hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM as a result of a notice of intention published in accordance with law for the purpose of hearing comments, suggestions, or protests concerning abolishing sewer district number thirteen of Ward Four of Calquashew Parish, Louisiana. I need a motion. Do we have any? Mr. Delafield?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the next one.
This one, yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, can you ask for any public comment before you...
Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have one. This is the one that was out there near, I think it was near the golf course or something that's been going on for a long time. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
So, do we have a motion? Landry, my second. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Latour. Any comments, any objections? Item carries. Item number six, hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM as a result of a notice of intention published in accordance with law for the purpose of hearing comments, suggestions, or protests concerning abolishing sewer district number thirteen of Ward Four of Calquashew Parish, Louisiana. I need a motion. Do we have any? Mr. Delafield?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the next one.
This one, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, can you ask for any public comment before you...
Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have one. This is the one that was out there near, I think it was near the golf course or something that's been going on for a long time. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
So, do we have a motion? Landry, my second. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Latour. Any comments, any objections? Item carries. Item number six, hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM as a result of a notice of intention published in accordance with law for the purpose of hearing comments, suggestions, or protests concerning abolishing sewer district number thirteen of Ward Four of Calquashew Parish, Louisiana. I need a motion. Do we have any? Mr. Delafield?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the next one.
This one, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, can you ask for any public comment before you...
Are there any comments or questions on this item?
I have one. This is the one that was out there near, I think it was near the golf course or something that's been going on for a long time. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
So, do we have a motion? Landry, my second. Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Latour. Any comments, any objections? Item carries. Item number six, hold a public hearing at 5:30 PM as a result of a notice of intention published in accordance with law for the purpose of hearing comments, suggestions, or protests relative to issuance of taxable water revenue bonds, Series 2018, not to exceed eight million five hundred thousand dollars principal amount at a rate not to exceed two-point-four-five percent for a term not to exceed twenty-two years for acquisition, expansion, and improvements to the treatment plant and distribution system of and within Water Works District Number Five of Wards Three and Eight. So, move. Got a motion by Mr. Latour, second by Mr. Gilery. Do we have any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, the item carries. We'll skip ahead, we'll come back to number seven.
Mr. President, I'm not sure, but on the public hearing, you may need to ask that one also if anybody's in the audience that wants to speak.
The past one?
Yes.
That's what I did.
On number six also?
Yeah, he did. I asked for discussion. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Okay, so, number seven is to hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM. We're going to wait till that happens. We're going to skip ahead to item number eight. Take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, we have three special event permits. Recommend that they be approved.
Move. Second. Got a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item ten, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated January 4th, 2018. Got a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item eleven, consideration of approving the Ways and Means Committee report dated January 25th, 2018. Mr. Gilery?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ways and Means Committee met on Thursday, January 25th, and held a public hearing to hear comments, suggestions, or protests relative to a draft system improvement plan with the environmental impacts for a proposed project to expand and improve the treatment plant and distribution system of Water Works District Number Five of Wards Three and Eight, also known as Mallet Junction. This project would expand the existing Mallet Junction Water Treatment Plant to a total treatment capacity of two-point-six million gallons per day. The project costs at eight billion four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand six-hundred-and-fifty, which is anticipated to be funded by means of a low-interest drinking water revolving loan program from the Louisiana Department of Health and Hospitals. Mr. Josh Fontenot with Manchet Consulting Group gave a brief presentation regarding the capital expansion project and discussed the following items: the purpose of the project, the project description, the project financing, and debt service, and cost to its users. There were no comments from the public, either pro or con, as a result of public hearing and following questions by the committee members. The meeting was adjourned. That's my motion. I need a motion to accept my report.
So, move. Got a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated January 25th. Let's go back to number twelve. Item number twelve, consideration of approving the Public Works Committee report dated January 25th, 2018. Mr. Brain?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee report dated January 25th, 2018 is as follows. Recommended that a resolution be adopted approving an amendment to the professional engineering contract between the police jury and Oakland and Associates for the North Perkins Ferry Road Bridge Replacement Project. Recommended that the, that resolution be adopted approving traffic engineering service contracts between the police jury and each of the following firms for the Calquashew Parish Transportation Initiative Program. Intelligent Transportation Systems Inc. for L.A. Highway 384 Project, Country Club Road; Alliance Transportation Group, Inc. for L.A. Highway 27 Corridor Project, Lewis Street to High Hope Road; Neil Schaefer, Inc. for L.A. Highway 1256 Corridor Project, Patton Street to Dave Dugash Road. Recommended that the, that a resolution be adopted accepting Coffee Pines Part Two, Phase Four subdivision. I stand up my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brain.
Move to receive report.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of approving the Agenda Committee report dated January 25th, 2018.
I'll move.
Got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries. Item fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following items as they relate to the police jury's interest in potential litigation involving prescription opioids. Bullet A, authorizing Samuel B. Gabb, general counsel, to the police jury to contract with and engage legal representation for the benefit of the Calquashew Parish Police Jury on a contingency fee basis for said potential litigation. And Bullet B, requesting approval by the Louisiana Office of the Attorney General with reference to this matter. Got a motion by Mr. Farnum and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item fifteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the purchase of property located at 2007 Molling Street, Lake Charles, within the appraised value of the property from Mid-South Bank. I've got a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. We have discussion. Mr. Gilery?
Yes, I guess, which building is this on Molling, and what are we purchasing it for?
It's, the property is located just east of the Human Services Building where Mr. Police Office is located.
The Old Bakery Place?
The Old Bakery Place, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilery. Any objections? Motion carries. Item sixteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an architectural engineering services contract for the Human Services Department Renovations Project. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the architectural engineering services contract for the Calquashew Parish Animal Services and Adoption Center Project. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving an amendment to the architectural engineering services contract for the Calquashew Parish Animal Services and Adoption Center Project. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item eighteen, consideration of authorizing the parish purchasing agent to purchase a work order program from S.H.I. International Corporation utilizing state contract purchasing procedures. Move on eighteen. Second. Motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item nineteen, take appropriate action on bids and/or requests for quotes received by the parish purchasing agent for the following: A, 901 Lakeshore Drive Building Ninth Floor Improvements Project.
So, move.
Second. The Director of Facility Management recommends that the low bid in the amount of ninety-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars of Pat Williams Construction LLC be accepted. I have a motion to accept by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item B, 3001 Industrial Avenue Canopy Project. Second. The project architect recommends that the low bid in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand five-hundred dollars of John D. Myers and Associates Incorporated be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item C. Move on C. Burton Coliseum Complex HVAC Upgrades and Improvements Project. Project architect recommends that the low bid in the amount of five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars of Seth Preola Construction LLC be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Latour. Discussion, we do have discussion. Mr. Scott?
I guess I just want to know, are we putting a Band-Aid on this problem, or is this really fixing the problem? Are we going to come back next year and have to add a... I mean, where are we on this project is what I want to know. I know we got an old facility we're trying to get in place, but what exactly is this five-hundred thousand going to accomplish?
Mr. Kelly is coming up to answer that question.
Dean Kelly, Director of Facilities? Mr. Scott, I don't want to call it a Band-Aid. This is more of a bridging...
That's expensive Band-Aid.
Yes, but what we're doing in this project is we're bridging the gap between where we are today and where we need to get with the next very large project. So, in this project, part of the title is HVAC upgrades and repairs, and one of the major issues we have with that facility is the control system, the building automation system is obsolete. And so, what we do have is very, very hard to control. So, in this project, we will replace that system, and that will then be built on in the next project. So it's not wasted at all. This, this new system will control the next project when it goes through. Also, in this project, we are installing the camera system that is so needed out there for the security of the facility. So it's not just HVAC, but it is both of those.
The cameras are going to cover the entire facility, inside, outside? I mean...
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. Landry?
That was good. Dennis got it.
All right. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item number twenty, take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various boards and districts. Item A, Mr. Bob King, Southwest Convention and Visitors Bureau. Move to appoint Mr. Rob King.
Second.
Mr. McMillan moves to appoint Mr. Rob King with a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item B, Ms. Mary Kay Eason, Airport District Number One.
Move to reappoint Ms. Mary Kay Eason.
Mr. Brain moved to reappoint Ms. Mary Kay Eason, the second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item C, Mr. Jeremy East, Water Works District Number Fourteen of Ward Five. Second. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Jeremy East by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I know we're about to hit six, but if you wouldn't mind if you could allow Mr. Bill Summers to come up, just a point of personal privilege to announce about the Zone Mardi Gras event coming up?
Certainly. Summers?
Evening, Mr. President, members of the jury. Bill Summers, Director of OJJS. This is the tenth year that the Calquashew Parish Police Jury has sponsored a Zone, and the Zone is an alcohol and tobacco-friendly event on the, on Fat Tuesday, on Mardi Gras Day.
Evening, uh, Mr. President, members of the jury. Bill Summers, a Director of OJJS. Uh, this is the, uh, the tenth year that, uh, the Couch Umpire Police Jury has sponsored a zone. And the zone is an alcohol and tobacco friendly, uh, event on the, uh, on Fat Tuesday, on Mardi Gras Day. Uh, it's a family event where kids, families come out, um, fun jumps, pizza, Coca-Cola products, laser tag, uh, DJ out there, you name it, it's out there. Uh, Sheriff's Office will be out there providing security. Um, uh, it's a, it's from noon to, uh, to four o'clock on Fat Tuesday, uh, on the, uh, on the, on the parade valve, on the parade route. Um, it's a, it's a, it's an event that grows bigger every year, uh, and we're really, uh, proud that this, uh, this jury has, has sponsored it. And we've been honored, uh, as well as with, uh, Dean Kelly and Facility Manage, Management to, uh, to be able to host it. So, um, take any questions or it's, it's this Tues, uh, Tuesday, the thirteenth, um, Mardi Gras Day. Welcome to come out and help us.
We've got, we've got some discussion. Thanks, you, thank you, Mr. Bill. Uh, Mr. Farnum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to assume that you meant free instead of friendly?
Free and friendly, yes, sir.
So, no alcohol, no tobacco allowed on the site, period, right?
As, that's right, as Mr. Gilery said, it is not a, uh, a free alcohol event, it is an alcohol-free event.
Yeah. That's, that's a much better event.
Yes, sir.
I, I know it's something that's, uh, it's very beneficial, there's a lot of folks that go to this every year and, you know, put on a wonderful event, so thank y'all for what y'all do.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farnum. Thank you, Mr. Summers. Okay, we'll go back to. Item. Seven. Item seven, hold a public hearing at six P.M. ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. Our first structure is at twenty-five forty-one Big Woods, Edgely Road. Uh, this is in the Edgely area. Uh, there's one house, it's, uh, the owner is a Mark Thomas Fontana. We recommend this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
So move. Second. We got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Latour. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to address this item? Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, motion carries.
This is, uh, the next one is forty thirty-five Gerald Lynn Lane. This is in the south of Quincy area, it's one manufactured home. Uh, the owner is a David Britt Landry, Ed Ux, and we, we're recommending this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have, uh, and we do have a speaker on this. Ms. Charlotte Landry?
I'll change my motion to move to discuss.
I was thinking that.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Charlotte Landry, four oh three four Sandy Lane, Dequince, Louisiana. They're wanting to condemn because it's got some soft spots in several places in the floor. But I've got pictures to show the exterior, uh. Can I pass these? The exterior is in great condition, it's, it needs to be power washed. But as far as the floor and the ceilings, they need to be, there's four spots in the floor. Floors can be replaced. Uh, it's a matter of time and money. Uh, my husband works, he's working right now. He works sixteen-hour days. And it's a matter of time and money. And there's four, I count four places, four holes that need to be replaced in the floor. And it's a matter of time and money, which I've had several illnesses in the last few years. And, like I say, it's just a matter of time and money in replacing them.
Thank you. Thank you, one second, we have some discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Robinson, I guess looking at the pictures, we have all seen much, much worse. I mean, I don't really see broken windows or anything like that. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure you got a call and that, and you had to respond to the call, you're just doing your job.
Yes, sir. Let me tell you the rest of the.
But is there more, I mean, that?
Yes, yes, sir, there, let me tell you the rest of the story.
What are you concerned about?
Yes, um, we did get a call because basically what has happened and, uh, is that this, this mobile home was damaged in Hurricane Rita. So basically what they did, they just took, took this mobile home, just pulled it to the back, and they moved in another mobile home on the property. So this, this trailer's been sitting there for the last thirteen years.
Oh, yeah, that's different. Okay, so, uh. So, Ms. Ms. Landry? This has really been sitting there that long?
It's been sitting there thirteen years.
So if, if we make a motion, you, you talked about time and money, that's been a lo, that's a lot of time.
Yes, it has.
I mean, it.
I've been fighting cancer for the last five years.
And, and I hate that, but, so what, I mean, how much more time do you need?
I don't know, that's up to my husband. And like I said, he, he works a lot.
He's not here. There.
He planned on redoing the floors.
I would be willing to change the motion to give you some type of time. Now, I'm going to assume she's not in violation for having the two structures on the property. Is the property large enough to, to have the two structures there? Mr. Crane, are you familiar with the case or?
Uh, I'll probably let Mr. Robinson answer that, but that was, that was one of my concerns too, is that if they have a structure out there that's never been removed, that's something that we would review to make sure that we could even permit that structure on that site. So that's something that we probably need to look at. If we don't have that information tonight, it may be, um, advantageous to defer that so that we could look into that and make sure.
I, I, that's what I do, I changed my motion to defer for thirty days and that'd give y'all some time to, let's find out if it's, the whole structure's in violation for even being there or not. And then if you would, ma'am, you, you, I can tell you probably at best, and I can't speak for everybody up here, you, you may get three to six months, and I doubt that you'll get the six months, but that's like the most amount of time that you're going to get. So somehow, and I know after you work sixteen hours, that's probably the last thing in the world he wants to do when he gets home, but i- if, if that's the decision that's made thirty days from now, I mean, somehow he's going to have to do it. Or, I mean, are you going to have to haul it off?
Okay.
I don't know if I got a second, but, Mr. Scott? Did you have discussion, Mr. Scott?
Oh, I was just curious about Mr. Landry covered it about, you know, can they even be there, so I'm interested in that, that's more of an issue, because that thing's in better shape than some of the neighborhoods I represent. I almost have to clean out the neighborhood and people live in them, so I mean, I don't, let's check on that part, that's.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check on it and, and report back. Mr. Guidry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Landry, what, what is the purpose, what's your intent with the property, ma'am? What, is it going to be used for rental property?
The property? Well, it's right next to.
The mobile home itself.
The trailer that we live in now. We plan on fixing it up, moving back in it. We thought, we thought we would fix it up and move back into it. But I got sick. And since then, we haven't been able to do anything.
So where y'all living is next door to this?
It's about fifteen foot away from that trailer there. We live on thirteen acres.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have thirteen acres and we've got it fenced off for cattle.
Do you have an amount in mind that you think would take to fix this?
Do I? I don't have any idea, that, that's, it's going to take some plywood to do the floors, I know that much. But how much plywood, I don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Guidry. Mr. President. Mr. Farnum?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, uh, you know, if, if that's all you have to do is fix the floors, the question came up about whether it can even be there. And, and I know we, we probably don't allow a, a second structure on a piece of property like that. And, and we probably really don't allow something to, to just be hauled in and worked on and then maybe, maybe move into it, then you got to get rid of the other one. So, uh, would you, would you sell one of these things after you get them fixed or? I, I, I know Mr. Landry's very going to point with, with the timeframe that, that you're probably going to get out of this jury, so, uh, I would, uh, I would suggest y'all get on it pretty quick.
Yes. We're looking at selling one as soon as we fix it up.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, what I was going to follow up with is that, uh, if, I'm not sure what their intention is, if they do sell it, that's fine, but if they wanted to keep it on there, we're going to have to check the square footage for the lot, make sure. Plus, if they want to hook it up to sewer, they're going to have to get DHH approval to do that. So, I'm not sure what the sewer system is like out there, but it, that may require an upgrade and that's another expense, so we need to check into that too.
Thank you. Mr. Crane? Mr. Landry, you?
Um, yes, I'm finished, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to defer for thirty days by Mr. Landry and second by Mr. Scott. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Item.
I would make a point of clarity. We're not related. I meant to say that a while ago, but as far as, as far as we, I know, me and Ms. Landry are not related.
Always hope.
There's somebody out there that might have been wondering that, so we going to clear that up.
Mr. McMillan?
And Ms. Landry, before you leave, you will be back here in another month, that we will get all this information, so we need to see you back in thirty days, uh, and then we'll move forward with which direction we're going to go after that. Just wanted to clear that up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Item C, four oh five Latjelay Lane, South Dequince area.
Yes, this is one manufactured home, the owner of record is a Zora May Wimberly Latjelay Estate. We're recommending this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
I would move.
Second. Got a motion to condemn by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Any objection? Motion carries. Item D, no action necessary, the structure has been removed. Item E, nine fourteen Manual Road, South Lake Charles area.
This structure has been removed also, so there's no, uh, further action required on this one.
Thank you. Item F, uh, there's no action necessary, it has been removed. Item G, forty twenty-one Carless Drive, Carless area.
This is one accessory building, the owner is a William Edward Pomeroy Ed Ux Estate, and we're recommending that this structure be removed, uh, condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move on a recommendation? Second. Looks like it's already gone. It's in the trees.
It's in the trees.
Got a motion to condemn by Mr. McMillan, second by Mr. Latour, any discussion? Anybody in the audience? Any objection? Motion carries. Item H, one forty-five Bruce Circle Moss Bluff area.
This is one house, uh, the owner is a Constance Elaine Cormier, and we're recommending that this home be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Move. Second. Okay, we got a motion by Mr. White to condemn, second by Mr. Collins. Anybody in the audience like to discuss? Any discussion from the jury?
Yeah.
Mr. Scott?
Have you been in contact with those people or?
Yes, I have. The lady that owns the house now lives in Waco, Texas. And I talked to her several months ago and she requested a list of contractors, she intended on, her intention was to tear it down. And she called me the other day, well, can y'all hold off, you know, a little while? I said, well, we've already got it on the agenda, so, you know, so she knows what's coming.
That's going to be a hefty ticket for that massive house, she better take care of that one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. White?
And I'd like to, uh, just echo, uh, what Mr. Robinson said, I've, this is the road I grew up on, and this house has been sitting like this for a good ten to fifteen years now, so, uh, that's why I made my motion.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any further, any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item I, four four seven B Road, Moss Bluff area.
This is one manufactured home, the owner is a Garland Odell Thomas Senior, and we're recommending that this structure be condemned and removed in thirty days.
Second. Okay, we have a, we have someone in the audience who would like to speak on this, Ms. Jessica Thomas. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Jessica Thomas, I live at twelve thirteen Gos Ferry Road in Moss Bluff. Um, this is a house we had planned on living in before Hurricane Rita hit, and, uh, the house we were living in, uh, was destroyed. So, we moved out on some property on Gos Ferry Road, and our intent was, with this, was to, um, finish the remodel and get it, uh, rented. Um, I tried to go up to the permit office to pull the permits, and because Mr. Garland, my husband's grandfather has passed away, uh, we were not able to pull the permit. But several years ago, my husband did pull permits, he thinks his grandmother, well, he told me his grandmother had pulled the permits. So, I'm just not sure. But when I spoke with Mr. Robinson, uh, back in August when we were first contacted, um, he had told me that if we put the doors on it and secured it, that, um, it would give us, you know, time to get everything. So we secured it, and this past month, we got another letter because there is no floor. But we cannot finish the floor until I get a permit. So, I'm, I'm not sure what to do.
Okay, hold on one second, we've got some discussion, Mr. Collins? Oh, he made the motion.
Mr. Wes?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason they could not get a permit or anything from that? Do you, could you elaborate a little bit on that, please? Or do you have any knowledge?
Oh, well, if, if there's not been a succession on the property and they don't own the property, then we, we probably wouldn't issue a permit. I don't know what the circumstance was. I, I don't know, is that right?
Mr. Farnum?
Has, uh, has any kind of succession papers been filed?
Uh, not to my knowledge, sir. I mean, I'm not real sure, but, um, his wife was the one that had pulled the permit years ago, when we first had the permit.
This is your husband's parents?
It's his grandparents. Uh, Garland Senior was his grandfather.
So who, who would be the rightful owners today?
Um, his wife is still alive and their three children are also living. My husband would be here, he just had surgery, so he's recovering.
So his, his grandmother is still alive?
Yes, sir.
And was there a will involved that would?
Honestly, I would have to. I would have to ask more questions with them.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Mr. Robinson, what, what does it lack to be, uh, to where nobody can come in and all that, for them to have it locked up? What, what would it take? I mean, I know y'all have had to visit the property, correct?
Yes, um, when I told her she had to secure the property, whenever we first went out there, that, uh, the back door was completely blown out. Uh, there's no floors, the majority of the floors in the structure have been removed, in fact, the whole structure is just gutted. They would have to now, because now this structure doesn't meet the HUD code anymore, so if they would try to make this into a residence, uh, they would have to meet all the building codes, electrical codes and everything else. So they would have to, so I told her they, they need to put a floor, because right now, anybody can crawl up underneath there and get up in there. And, uh, we did check for permits on this particular structure, and, uh, we, we couldn't find any.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. McMillan?
I would lead to our attorney, if you could give her some coaching on what she needs to do in order to get these permits, you know, and, uh, kind of move forward with this, because we could give you thirty days and you could come back up here and, and tell us, hey, we, we listened to what the attorney had to say and we've got a succession and a permits, but I think he could coach you a little bit on what you may need to do.
Yes, sir.
I would be happy to do that. Unfortunately, a, a succession with property involved is not going to be an easy fix. Um, you're, you're looking at some time. Uh, if I may suggest, uh, a deferral, uh, and Wes and I will, will talk, and maybe we could find a, a way, uh, to remedy that without having to go the succession route right away. Uh, but we can, we can look into that, that's all I can suggest is maybe deferral.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gabb. Mr. President?
Mr. President, I'd like to change my motion to defer, so we can look into this a little further.
I'll second it.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Collins has a motion to defer.
How long?
Thirty days. Got a second by? I'm sorry?
Thirty days will be good for us.
Thirty? Thirty, yes, sir. Thirty days and a second by Mr. Gidry. Any objection?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I don't know, I don't know.